Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of February 9th. If we could all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. So just a couple of housekeeping things. First, if you're not speaking, please leave your mask on. And if you are, and if you come up to the podium, it's okay to take your mask off. It's actually easier to understand and as you speak. Actually, that's all I had for housekeeping.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Just like to pull GG10 for discussion.
So I think everyone wanted. We have full agreement.
Cool. Good. Great.
So there's a motion to approve the consent agenda, also pulling GG11, correct?
GG10.
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 Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Did we have? We had a motion. Do we have a second to that?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes, and we have the council meeting minutes from January 19, 2022. And we also have the executive session minutes also from January 19, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D1, and this is Hector Angel from Casa Margaritas, and this is a request to transfer the Class BV liquor license to George Moreno LLC, also doing business as Casa Margarita Mexican Restaurant. This would be a call for public hearing.
Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to call for a public hearing on March 2nd.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to call for public hearings. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1, and this is Louis Pires of 71 San Elizabeth Street. This is a request for no parking space.
Motion to approve based on the positive recommendations.
Second. So we will, I would assume at this point, if the council is okay, we probably want to refer to the solicitor to create, Mike, do we need an ordinance in regards to that, correct? Am I right with that? Excellent. So I'll take that as approved with referred. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2, and this is Christopher Santiago, 215 Wood Street, and this is a request for an accessible parking space.
I make a motion.
Second reading, sorry.
Sorry.
Second reading.
I make a motion that we approve it.
So. There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve, and this is actually what we were just talking about on the previous agenda item, which is what will happen on that one and come in front of us. Again, we appreciate Chief, the work from the Police Department to make sure that it's an appropriate next step, and obviously you gave us a recommendation forward. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G1, and this is the Bristol Christmas Festival with an additional new member of Anthony Martini of 46 Highlands Road with interest in appointment. We also have a recommendation from the chairman, Michael Riley.
Based on the recommendation of the chair, I move that we approve it.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1, and this is a public notice from CRMC in regards to Kenneth and Lee Miller of 50 Everett Avenue, and this requires response before February 13, 2022.
This, Mr. Chairman, is this a receiving file?
It is unless we have objection to it. And I'm not aware of any objection. Mr. Administrator, I don't believe the Diane Williamson or our Harper Mastick, Greg Marsili expressed any concerns, correct?
No, they are in support, and also the Harvard Commission is aware of it.
Outstanding. Thanks for that point. So motion received and filed.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, receiving filed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I2, and this is the Board of Directors of Rogers Free Library, Jackie Katz, with the introduction of the new library director, Dawn Jenkins.
Welcome.
Thank you. I wish this were storytime and you were all children.
Somehow so do we.
My name is Jackie Katz. I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees at Rogers Free Library. As most of you know, we needed to hire a new library director, and I want to give you just a little bit of background information about our process. We had a national search, which began in November of '21. We received 16 applicants from seven states and one international. The search committee interviewed eight candidates, and then the top two candidates were presented to the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees interviewed the last two candidates, and after a short deliberation, we selected our new director. The Board of Trustees is thrilled to introduce you to our new library director, Dawn Jenkins. Dawn comes to us from Ocean City, New Jersey. Her first day of work was February 1st. Dawn has over 20 years' experience working in libraries. Her enthusiastic energy, positive outlook, and attention to detail are just a few of the qualities she brings to Rogers Free Library. Dawn stated that she is, quote, "a collaborative team player who understands how every department of the library contributes to making it the informational, cultural crossroads of the community." She also went on to say, and this is the part you guys will like, "I am also committed to creating municipal and community partnerships that build layers of purpose into all of our endeavors. This includes fiscal responsibility and maximizing taxpayer investment in an exceedingly complex information landscape. We have a great library with a fabulous staff. Now we have a dynamic leader who will continue to make Rogers Free Library the jewel of our beloved town." I also would like to extend my sincere appreciation to the staff at Rogers Free Library. The staff has maintained a positive, supportive, and helpful attitude during a challenging time. The past two years have been difficult. We have had multiple changes in leadership, changes in policies and services, and had our life turned upside down by a pandemic. Through it all, they have maintained the highest level of service for our patrons. The future is bright at Rogers Free Library. Please welcome Dawn to Bristol and to the Rogers Free Library family.
I appreciate that you all have a packed agenda, so I'll keep this to a minimum. Clearly, I'm a passionate public servant, and I'm passionate about public libraries. They are cornerstones of democracy. When I considered where I wanted to go after returning from an extended stay in Europe, I knew I wanted to be in a community that has the elements that are rarely found these days, and that's community engagement. It's dedicated, transparent public servants, and it's a solid library. These were founded by Andrew Carnegie to ensure that all of people have access to information, to ensure that democracy can function and flourish. I just want to extend my gratitude to that staff that Jackie just talked about. Not only have they endured so much, but they're eager. They're extremely eager to continue and to grow and to help provide the 21st century library that Bristol needs. I also want to thank our Board of Trustees. Great job in selecting them, and I just want you to know that never in my entire career have I experienced a hiring process that was so clearly communicative, thoughtful, considerate, and meaningful, and I mean that very genuinely. Today, I had two board members stop by. One's here now, and I got texts from another, so that shows you how engaged they are. The other thing that I would like to express gratitude for is the town here, and I just want to say, on, I think it was my second day, I met Steve Contente, Julie Goscher-Goucher. I want to be inclusive there. She was extremely supportive of delivering a budget on my fifth day of employment. And in addition to that, Chris Jocelyn, Steve Greenlee, Ray Falcoa, Melissa Cordero, and her generous welcome today, and I hope that I will be able to honor the 30-year legacy of Joan Prescott, who served this community so dutifully. I look forward to working with you all.
Just motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. There's a motion and a second to receive and file. Is there any discussion?
Just basically, welcome, and we look forward to your service at the library, and I'll drop in sometime.
It's perfect. All in favor? Any opposed? Good luck.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is Hagan Shahadi Company. This is a presentation for the fiscal year of 2021 audited financial statements and communication from the Auditor General Office in regard to the state aid revenue recognition.
I was checking to see if the auditors were here, and I was like, geez, I don't see anyone. They're coming up online, so we'll give them a moment. Julie, you want to vamp for a moment if you don't mind?
Just say that we're welcoming Hagan Shahadi for the presentation. You may remember this audit firm. They've done our last few years of audits, and so Mary will present the financial statements and hopefully in a high-level, understandable way, as it is a 150-page document that will put anybody to sleep, so.
Even myself, yes. Sometimes I grab a set of financial statements to review in the evening and put it on my lap, and in no time, I'm like, oh, what am I doing on the couch with it on my lap? So they are long and they are tedious, but they are all required in terms of disclosures with the governmental agencies as well as the state agencies. So in your document, it's broken down into a number of sections. The first section is the government-wide financial statements. The second section is the governmental fund financial statements, followed by your enterprise funds, your fiduciary funds, your notes to the financial statements, required supplemental in your case would be your budget and actual, and we can talk about that. That's much further back in the document, as well as information on your pension and your other post-employment benefit funds. Then the State of Rhode Island requires supplementary information, which is all of your individual funds. So if there's any particular fund that any of you have interest in, all of the funds are disclosed in the supplemental section of the financial statements, and certainly, last but not least, the State of Rhode Island has a form that's referred to as the MPT2 that Julie spends an awful lot of time on to develop, which is also required to be included in the financial statements. In the financial statements themselves, happy to report, you have two reports in the financial statements. Our opinion, which is based on your financial statements taken as a whole, as well as what's referred to as the Yellow Book, but it's really our opinion based on your internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations, and that's much further back in the document as well, and both reports had no findings. So that's kudos to the town, to Julie and her people, as well as all of your other department heads, because quite frankly, although Julie spends a lot of time preparing for the audit and certainly implementing controls that the town has in place in order to receive these clean reports, it really is kudos to all of your department heads who do a good job putting their information together, reporting on a regular basis, whether it be on the cash disbursement side of the internal controls or on the cash receipt side of the internal controls as well. The section that follows our report letter is something that's referred to as the management discussion and analysis, and as funny as this sounds, because I feel like I've been saying this for years, is that it's supposed to be a summary of the document itself in layman's terms. So really, what the management discussion and analysis does, or MDNA does, is it takes all of the information and it tries to highlight the big picture items. And so in your instance, if you look on Slide 4, that I believe you would have in front of you, or in the financial document itself, it would begin on Page 4 of the financial statements and run through Page 11. You will see that there are financial highlights. The government-wide, again, is the town taken as a whole, so it's all of the funds included in the town. It's the government-wide. It actually includes both the governmental activities as well as the business-type activities, which in this case would be your enterprise funds. So here, the town's assets exceeded its liabilities by $57 million in terms of what the net position was. It realized an increase this year of $12 million, $845, and that information is really provided in its detail on pages, just so I can get the right pages for you here. Pages 14 and 15 is where you're going to see the statement of activity, so that's where you're going to see the increase, and on Pages 12 and 13 is really the statement of net position. So that's where you are going to see where the assets exceed the liabilities that I just spoke about. The largest liability, as you know, we've talked about this in the past, is going to be your net pension liability. You certainly have significant bonds that are out there, both in your governmental funds and your business-type activities, but in terms of your liabilities, we're really looking at both your OPEB, which is about a $6 million liability, $6.7 million liability, as well as your net pension, which is a little bit over $22 million. The following pages within your document are your governmental funds. Now, those are the funds that you're most familiar with. Your general fund is what is really your budgetary fund, and then your non-major funds are your remaining funds that are included in the document. So they're going to be all your capital project funds and all your special revenue funds. On Pages 7 and 8 in the document, you'll see that the town has the opportunity to speak about the economic factors and the next year's budget rate. So here, the town is comparing Bristol County to the town with regard to the unemployment through the budget for the 2022 expenditures, and that the tax rate is increasing or did increase from $14.07 to $14.38 per thousand from '21 to '22. And anytime, if you have any questions, you can certainly stop me. The next section of the financial statements, as I just indicated, are going to be your government financial statements or your governmental fund financial statements. So they're very similar in the sense that they're both going to report the activity. What is really different with regard to your government-wide financial statements and your governmental fund financial statements is in your government-wide financial statements, all of the assets and liabilities are recorded on the balance sheet. Where in your governmental fund financial statements, we're really reporting those assets that are purchased in the current year with current funding. So if the council were to budget capital assets in the budgetary process, that would be an expenditure in the current year in your governmental funds, but would be an asset in your government-wide financial statements. The enterprise funds, which follow the governmental funds in your document, the reporting of those are very similar. So those proprietary funds that you have, which in your case is going to be your sewer enterprise fund, you're not going to see a significant difference between the enterprise fund as it's presented in the proprietary fund as it is presented in the government-wide, and that's because for governmental accounting reporting on the governmental funds, it's reported based on the modified accrual basis of accounting, and in the proprietary funds, it's reported based on the accrual basis, which is the same basis of accounting that you are going to see the government-wide financial statements on. The proprietary fund, again, you only have one. It's the sewer enterprise fund. This fund had operating revenue in the current year of $6,174,000 and operating expenditures of $5,200,000. The non-operating expenditures were $634,000. You had transfers of $71,000 for a total change in the net position of the sewer enterprise fund of a positive $221,798. Fiduciary funds in your case are going to be your pension, as well as your other post-employment benefit fund. In these cases, your net position in your pension is $21.8 million, and your OPEB is $13.7 million. Now, there was a change, and if you look back in some prior year financial statements, you're going to see some discussion about agency funds. The agency funds, I won't say were completely renamed as custodial funds, because Gatsby '84 did move some of the funds into what's referred to as special revenue funds now, but in essence, those funds of the town still exist. They just exist in a different format within the financial statements. Following the notes, following the basic financial statements are going to be your notes. It's going to have all your details. Most of your notes will not have changed significantly from the prior year. The biggest change in your notes would be any additions that the government would have required us to include with regard to, in particular, pensions and OPEBs. Next year, there are going to be some changes with regard to lease reporting, and so if the town does, in fact, have any significant leases, you will find that in the next year, you're going to see some changes with regard to those leases. On Pages, or starting on Page 98, is going to be your budget and actual. Now, that is generally, in my experience of doing this for so many years, is really where the interest of most board members are, and so I said 98, but I meant 96, sorry. So in that budget and actual, you will see that the property tax revenues were up over what you had budgeted, and.
Can we say bless you to someone? Because we can hear somebody sneezing in the background. In a very positive way, just bless you.
Well, that's my husband in the other room, so I will tell him that you. This is what happens when you do this at home, right?
We've all experienced it, no problem.
So realistically, when you're looking at it, your total revenue, so we're on Page 93, your total surplus revenue over your final budget was $357,000 in total. Some of the areas in particular that comprise the positive variances, property taxes, $408,000 into governmental, $843,000, licenses and permits, $185,000. Your interest earnings was $92,000, and then your other revenue was $88,000. So those were some of your bigger amounts. On your expenditure side, again, the town does a very good job at budgeting and monitoring those budgets on a monthly basis from the time that budget's passed. So when you look at the expenditure side, you have very small areas where your expenditure, your actual expenditure exceeded the amount that was budgeted for a particular line item, but you'll notice that it certainly didn't exceed it in total. So that's what I look at when I look at, you know, the overall management of a community is, you know, are they keeping to their budget? I mean, you always want to budget your revenues on a conservative basis, so having surpluses in your revenue are a good thing, and the same is true on the expenditure side. If you are budgeting your expenditures fairly based on what you really think your needs are for the town, you really should not have any significant turnbacks, as I refer to them, or variances at the end of the year. And then, again, lastly, new standards. Next year, the standard that will be implemented will be the Gatsby '87, and that is going to be for leases. For those of you that, you know, have some background on leases, leases up until this point were considered capital leases and operating leases, and they were treated differently, both in commercial accounting as well as in governmental accounting. Really, what will happen with this new standard with Gatsby '87 is it will then combine the two, and the reporting will be significantly different, and so we will certainly work with Julie if she's got any leases and, you know, be sure that the town implements the standard effectively. And then the last, the second report that I spoke about earlier in terms of its location in the financial statements is on Page 154, and that's referred to as the Yellow Book, but in essence, what we're reporting on here is the town, to the town's ability to have good internal controls and comply with laws and regulations, and, you know, happy to announce that you didn't have any findings, and we found no differences in any of the areas that we actually tested. Does anyone have any questions?
Mary, I do. You mentioned that you found no findings in where you tested. Where did you test this year, just generally speaking?
Sure, sure. So on the internal controls themselves, we look at the controls over the town, and so we look at areas in this particular year, in particular payroll, cash disbursement, so all your AP, and then on the cash receipt side, this year, we looked at areas including property taxes, the abatements and the exemptions, and the refunds. So we kind of alternate those internal controls that we are going to test, but those are the areas that we looked at this year. But then keep in mind that we do a lot of substantive testing as we refer to it, meaning we pull invoices in a lot of random areas during the course of the audit to make sure in particular that, when I'm saying that we had no findings with laws and regulations, that we'll just take a particular fund that you have, you have a HUD fund, and we test those HUD dollars, those CDBG dollars, to make sure that they're in compliance with the agreement itself and that they're allowable expenditures within that program. So although your single audit hasn't been issued as of yet, but your single audit, in particular this year, we're looking at the CARES money because it's new, and there could be some risk that communities have not complied with the requirements of the CARES money as it was directed. This year, we're looking at the CDBG money, and we're looking at the agricultural fund. In the prior year, in 2020, we looked at the passenger ferry grants. So we pick particular grants within the areas and drill down on them, particularly in areas of compliance requirements with laws and regulations. So allowable expenses is probably the biggest area, but some of it has to do with cash management and whether or not you're spending those dollars appropriately. Did I answer your question?
You did. You did.
And then other, you know, other tests are done, of course. You know, we have a lot of areas where we just, I don't mean just as it's immaterial, but we're allowed to do, you know, analytical procedures, so we're comparing one year to the next, or your community to, you know, the state or your community to the federal government, depending on what the fund is, and then certainly, in some of the grants that are smaller, we're comparing them to the grant award that you receive. So are you overspending the grant award? You know, are you spending it within? In some of the grants that are smaller, we're comparing them to the grant award that you receive. So are you overspending the grant award? You know, are you spending it within the requirements? And certainly are you not underspending it? Because the last thing you want, of course, as well. Is monies that you're leaving on the table for a particular grant that you received for. You know, a particular purpose. And then on the capital project side, of course, as you know, you've got the bonding and you're going out for bonding again. We're always looking at the capital project side for appropriate expenditures for that project.
Thank you, counsel.
Any questions on the council?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have. I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. It feels like I ask this question every year, but. Relative to other towns or size, how are we stacking up from a financial management standpoint?
Well, again, as I kind of started at the beginning of this evening, you are very lucky to have Julie. She does a wonderful job and so you stack up quite well both financially because. Again, you budget within your means and so your fund balances are where they should be. And certainly your. Books and records in terms of your internal controls are really probably one of the better ones within. The state and certainly within Massachusetts as well, because as you know, I do Massachusetts communities.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to comment, sorry. My chair is like sinking, I'm getting shorter as I'm sitting here. I adjusted it before I sat down. I just wanted to thank you, but and thank the staff. Julie do a great job and we're we are lucky to have you and we know that and. And our administrator and everybody, all of our department heads, I mean, our budget process has been. Much simpler over the the last several years than it was like twenty years ago or or thirty years ago because. Much of the work is done before we even get to look at it that our administrator has done a great job or several lasted several administrators. To make sure that the departments are doing the best that they can and that, you know, nothing's really inflated. If I shouldn't use that word in this day and age because everything's inflated, but. Our budget lines are not and they're they're realistic reflection of over the last five years, what we've what we've done done and what we think. We need, of course, the least things that happen. So I just wanted to.
And that's and I didn't mean to interrupt you, counselor, but that's that's why you your bottom line, when you're looking at your variances in your, especially on your expenditure side. You don't have large swings one way or the other.
Right.
Because you're budgeting appropriately.
Right. So I just want to thank Julie and and our administrator and all of the staff because you do do a fantastic job and we're very fortunate.
Thank you. I just want to add the staff for sure because when we're talking about the property tax collections, I mean, as you know, that's all happening in the collection office and. Michelle De Mayo, the assessor collector is overseeing them. And so there's very little I need to do and they make me look good. So thank you. They're very seasoned and I'm lucky to have that group and in the finance and tax side both.
Yeah, excellent job. Julie, I just have a quick question on. On the the funds that we have, all the various funds that are out there, you know, from the coal fund to the the Marshall Walden Fund and. When they get down to a very low amount, whether they're five thousand, six thousand dollars. Do we do any sort of reconciliation to combine those? We leave them put? Do we not touch those? Just I noticed a lot of them out there.
Yeah, they're they're mainly endowments that were left to us from the town and I probably could make a case for combining them. If they were left to us with a similar purpose, but there's something nice about leaving their name on them, even if it's just a few thousand dollars that we have left. I. It's sort of a personal preference more than anything. If I I don't think it's not much more to account for them separately, so I leave them alone. But I'm open to suggestion.
Yeah, just curious. I just was curious on that process of it got to such a low amount.
Yeah.
Do we just leave it alone and and go from there?
Yeah, it's probably worth a review at some point, but I've left it.
And then from your perspective, getting ready for the the budget. Where you see the biggest, the biggest things is as far as schools. Looking at this, the audit, I mean, if you overall it consistently growing.
Well, we're just now getting all of our our departments. Were required to give us their budgets on Monday, so we're just entering all of the data in now. The school department, just by virtue of them being such a large part of our budget, anytime they have any increase at all, which of course they would. You know, it's a it's a hit for us. So but we, I mean, we anticipate that and. Unfortunately, budgets don't seem to go down very much every, you know, cost of living and especially now with prices increasing on. On projects. So I think one of our challenges and something we're really focused on, which we'll hear more about next week is the capital budget. So we have our five year capital plan that's in process now. And we're trying so hard to fund more of that through the operating because they do seem to be recurring capital needs, D P W equipment, police vehicles. We've done a good job getting those into the operating budget. So I think we'll keep chipping away at that and hopefully not have to bond so much in future years.
So what you're saying is that instead of putting in a capital budget plan, we would just start incorporating those into a. Into the the normal budget, for example, a huge truck, I'm thinking like a trash truck or something.
Right. So last year, yeah, yeah, last year was the first year in a very long time that we. Put it about, we put about five hundred thousand dollars into our operating capital. Prior to that, we had put. You know, fifty thousand, whatever we could eke out of the budget, but it really wasn't enough to do anything with. And then we ended up having to borrow for everything. So. Think we've we've made some good progress and we'll be looking at that again this year.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. No, it's already been mentioned that the department, the department has to do a great job monitoring their budget and that appears to be very true. Looking at the monthly report that you provide to us, Julie, you know, that's pretty, pretty consistent, you know, that they. Have taken control and monitoring their budget very close. So that's very much appreciated. And as always, thank you for your efforts as well.
So I'm going to restate because it's worth it. Julie, do an outstanding job. You're surrounded by. People that also do an outstanding job, Mr. Administrator. This, none of these things happen without this overall, and this is worth taking a moment. Mary, you made two comments that I'm going to bring back to the front here. One of them is that you said we do an excellent job of budgeting. Well, we can all kind of give ourselves a little tap on that one. But you also, and I think this is more important, is that we do an excellent job monitoring. And that's been said a couple of times, it's not just budgeting well, but it's making sure that. A those dollars are spent correctly and if they're not making adjustments, whether they're too low or too high. So those were outstanding points and I think for the public, you just gave us. A little bit, the tip of, I hate to say the tip of the iceberg, but a little bit of the information, a hundred and fifty page document that was pulled by thousands of documents. So this was a quick overview that I asked that we keep it quick and I didn't, it was outstanding how you did it. The reason why is that this can, you can drown in paperwork on this and you drown in information, did an excellent job sharing it. And the the takeaways have already been expressed by my colleagues. And I'll say it again, it's excellent budgeting, excellent monitoring. We talk all the time about our our bond rating. We all can appreciate that on a personal level, when you borrow money and your credit score is higher, it costs less to borrow money. It is no different for the town. So and that does not happen by accident. So outstanding job to all.
Just very quick question on the pension liabilities, the town police plan liability, do we know how many folks we still have in that plan at this point?
We have around forty left, very close to that number. But our our most recent funded status were up to sixty three percent, which is improvement. I mean, we're out of that. What we what they were state was deeming to be critical status. We've moved out of that. We're improving greatly and O P E P is doing very well as also. Over a hundred percent funded now, so we can. Doing a great job in those areas.
Thank you.
Retired or?
Yes, no more active members in that plan, right.
So Julie, would you help us with the motion necessary?
Yes, if you could make a motion to. Allow the administrator to accept the financial statements on behalf of the town because we are waiting for the school department. To finish their audit. So we are on extension now until March fifteenth. They may be able to get it done sooner than that, but as you know, they've had a lot of changes at the administration office and. It's been a challenge for. The finance director there to to get going. He's doing a great job from what I hear and he's working really hard to get it done, but there was a lot to do. So.
Would you restate that motion?
Yes, could you please? Defer to the town administrator to accept the financial statements on behalf of the town when they are finalized with the school members in them.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Is there discussion?
Just just very quickly on the school, I've experienced that on the other side and the other little town. That is so true. It's not so much at the local as it is actually also at the state level. They've had some hiccups over there and certainly. Have helped have, we've had to hold things up for extensions. So we've experienced that as well.
If if it, just in case it concerns anybody listening, Mary, I don't know, we talked briefly about how many communities are on extension, but. Because of state reporting requirements, I believe that's primarily the reason. I think well over half of the communities in Rhode Island have extended their audit releases this year. So we are not.
I don't know the number exactly, but there are certainly a great deal of them and and Julie and I have discussed as soon as you get the numbers. For the school department, they're a component unit of the town of Bristol, so we would need to drop those numbers in, but the remaining part of the document wouldn't change.
And in keeping with this part of it, there are upcoming meetings, which have already been mentioned, we have a five year capital project. Next week, meeting next week and the five year capital project is to make sure that we're focused on the things that we've said are important and we keep the funding. Appropriately for those things and to say it a little plainer, to make sure that we don't see something shiny and new and change our whole direction. We, as a council and administrator and and treasurer and staff. Agree that this is where we want to go and that five year meeting keeps us on that direction. There's also March third is the first of the joint finance committee meetings, which is at the school. The sixteenth is the joint finance committee meeting again, and then twenty first, twenty second, twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty eighth are. Budget meetings. These are all part of the agenda in the beginning. To point this out is that this all connects to the budget and it's all part of the conversation. So. There any other discussion?
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, I I'm glad that you've actually pointed that out also to make the community aware of. That the the discussion deliberation of the budget will be taking place throughout those days. So if you have any points of. You know, to make this is a great time to come out and, you know, share that with us.
I skipped one, April eighteenth is the actual public hearing. All of this, of course, will be advertised. I just bring it up again now. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Thank you all. And again, if you ever have any questions during the course of the year, you can certainly funnel them through Julie or or contact me directly and I'd be happy to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I four, and this is a request for executive session.
And we'll take that up at the end, please.
The next item on the agenda would be K one, and this is the special report from Alan Klepper from the Bristol County Water Authority. This is the monthly report for January twenty twenty two.
Motion to receive and file.
Second with a quick comment.
We had a motion by Tim, seconded by Tony, discussion?
Very quickly, it appears, at least from the report, that the current executive director is doing a great job. And certainly moving things along, you know, for the water authority. So I'm glad to see that happening.
Thank you for sharing.
Looks like they voted another four percent rate increase in support of the major projects.
No, thank you for sure.
Sorry.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is L one, and this is a resolution pursuant to the town charter section two oh eight. And this is to authorize the town council to sell the land and building known as Oliver School located at one fifty one State Street. And this would be called for public hearing on March second.
Motion to call for a public hearing on March second.
Second motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to call for public hearings. Are any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda G G one zero, G G ten.
So that was, that was all of us that wanted that.
That's true.
Which is a wonderful reflection. Chief, I know that I reached out and spoke with the administrator a little bit earlier and. I know he talked to you and shared upfront that we wanted to have a quick synopsis and most importantly, to share with the public some great information on here. Floor is yours, sir.
If I could, if I could ask Sergeant Ricardo Marado, he's the author of our report. He worked in concert with my office to put it together. If I could ask him to.
Sergeant Marado, the floor is yours, sir.
And I'll let Sergeant give a review and I certainly can answer any follow up questions.
Thanks, chief.
Good evening, council members, our administrator, town clerk, chief. Julie, I haven't seen you in a while. This is the second year in a row that Chief Lynch has asked the accreditation department to put this report together. It's just a combination of a highlight, I should say, of all of the accomplishments that the police department has done in two thousand and twenty one. From community events to programs that were rolled out to just. You know, stats, crime stats, calls for service, you name it, everything is in this fifty seven page document. I'll be happy to take any questions if anyone has them.
Sergeant, if you were to. Be with your fellow accreditation officers and you were to have this report in front of them. What would be the pride points that you would point out to them and also to the public? How would you handle that?
Well, this, I it's safe, the same reason when people ask us why we want to run for politics, not one just in Plano. There's quite a few highlights.
Kind of hoping you would say that, sir.
Pouring on his political hat.
Quite a few highlights in here that I'm pretty proud of as a police department are some of the goals. And objectives you can look at as a department, how we're looking forward into some of those. Future items to help us help us in the community, mostly the community. And then if you look at some of the achievements by our. Detectives division as far as ICAC and HIDEA, what they were involved in and the level of.
Sergeant, would you take a moment to explain to everybody what you just said?
I knew you were going to ask me that acronym. So ICAC.
You can.
So ICAC is a, we partner up with other municipalities and the state police and we, one of our detectives investigates. Child molestation type, you know, crimes, computer crimes and Hider is another detective that works with the state part time in. Drug narcotics type work. So.
Thank you.
And they've both, they've been both successful and. Make another apartment, you know, proud of being that they're part of these big cases and. Crimes, especially via child molestation, one of the crimes that our officer was involved with, which is in this report, made it to Supreme Court. So.
Thank you.
The other events, items that I'm proud of is the community oriented events that Chief Lynch. Has really pushed and just continued from the last administration and, you know, we just expanded and made it a little bit bigger and better. The community events like the trunk or treat, all positive stuff when we do a child ID kit. Function that, you know, at a community event also. All great things. I think I'm proud of all the department for being a community oriented. Police department. A lot of police departments have community policing officers separate, but for us, we are all community police officers. So.
Colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add that as a talking point, and I'm sure Sergeant Marado was being a little bit modest, but in the report, you'll see that. You know, our department is both nationally and state accredited. And in two thousand and twenty one, Sergeant Marado was awarded prestigious award being accreditation manager of the year. So not only we. Following all of the accreditation standards, we're setting the model for other police departments to emulate us. So kudos to Sergeant Marado. On a job well done. He'll also be recognized in the coming month at the general assembly. For a lockbox program, which is very good to our seniors and and other programs where people can contact the police department. And we can establish a program to have emergency access, you know, for people's loved ones into a home. It's just up if anybody wants to look on our Facebook, I want to say it was almost a hundred and fifty or a hundred and thirty six that we've been able to disseminate out into the community. And Sergeant goes around to other departments and is educating them on this great, on this great program. But. Certainly a couple of highlights. That I'd like to talk about, obviously. You have seen me come in from the council, ask for money and we certainly could probably ask for it in in our operating budget. But I always think it's a good thing to kind of come in and ask the council the contingency funding because it gets the message out into the community, hear about the police department. But the huge success that the kids camp was this year with the pandemic going on gave the children an opportunity. We expanded into a two week program. You know, the trunk or treat, I mean, we aligned Bayview Avenue with the youth of this community. And that's a new program and I was very proud. And, and that's a new program, and I was very proud, you know, to stand out there as the chief, and just to see the whole parking lot and the grounds of the police station Littered with families and, and kids enjoying themselves was certainly, you know, a, a home run. And when you look back, and last year was a hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of service, so I hope you all Going to be very proud to see a vintage police car with the old bubble gum light up on top. It'll be representing the pride of Bristol in the hundred twenty-five years of exemplary service that this police department has had, the hallmark Of providing, and, and as Sergeant said, I'm, I'm glad to carry on, you know, the legacy of the, the previous chiefs. They've all done an exemplary job. I came in and we've been able to hit the ground running and continue to build on A lot, a lot of those programs are probably my greatest accomplishment. I was talking to the new librarian, I said, well, I'd like to come over and maybe read story someday at a children's book club, but I'll come over, but I'll bring Brody and also Keith Maderis, and we've put together a coloring book I think is a very important lesson that's going on, and he's hitting all of our elementary schools right now, and It's certainly all Bristol, so if you go through the coloring book, you will see where Brody's adventures have taken him through the town of Bristol. But there's a great messaging, you know, that's going on from the police department, you know, inclusion, of understanding, of team building, empathy. And I think it's a great message. A lot of people, there was a big movement to defund the police the last couple of years, and I want to thank this council for doubling down and investing in the police department. And I hope you know that I took all of those things very serious, put out a positive message, you know, doubled down That the Bristol Police Department is a fabric of this community, and it'll continue to do so, and, and I'm certain that the legacy will carry on, you know, past, past my tenure, but I, I want to thank the administrator and certainly this council for the deep investment. It's an honor and a privilege to serve as your police chief In the work, you know, with people like Sergeant Marado, that it's that team effort that really accomplishes all of the greatness that we have. But you folks have invested in us, and I want to thank you, and you know, obviously The administrator is one thousand percent behind our initiatives, and it, it's a winning team, and it, it's working, and I'm very proud to be here.
See why the whole council wanted this agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, chief, if the general public wants to take a look at the report, where, where would they be able to find it?
It's on our webpage, and we also pushed it out on our social media pages, so there's, there's a link there, and we've already received a lot of, a lot of positive comments. And we'll be pushing out an annual report on the accomplishments of our animal shelter as well, and so that Transparency is big in the twenty-first century of policing, and, and we hope that people take an opportunity and thumb through it, and We bought a special program, you get the swishing effect as it changes the pages. So if you hear about that, it, it's an enjoyable document to read.
Was that in the budget, chief?
So I think Julie will vouch for me. I also operate the police department within budgetary guidelines.
You know, just another comment, I, I think what I like the most about this report, and this is the second year that we've gotten this report, and It's so helpful during budgeting time, because it's so comprehensive, and the other thing I really like about it is And all of our agencies give us data and everything like that, and that's great, but what I really like about this report Is the narrative, like, there's a whole narrative in there, and it kind of talks about the evolution of things and, and things like that, and I think the other thing, I think that's important about documents like this, is that it provides a historical context in which our law enforcement agencies are, are working. And we'll always be able to look back on some of these reports and pull them down off the shelf Twenty years from now and say, this is what the Bristol Police Department, you know, was doing twenty years ago, or, or something like that. And so all in all, I, I think it's, it's really helpful, I think that It, you know, it should almost be a best practice that, you know, at some point, we're producing reports like this and everything, because Sometimes when we're all, you know, we, we leave for other positions and, and things like that, and then we have a historical record and a snapshot Shot in time for that, and so that's just one comment I wanted to make, chief, and, and thanks for making budgeting a little bit easier for us When we have these reports in hand, and, and to the town administrator, of course, and to Sergeant Marado for producing the report.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just briefly, thank you very much. I think it's very comprehensive and certainly highlights the many accomplishments and, you know, from the years' rap.
Yeah, chief, I was just curious, where do we, where do I get Brody's coloring book?
We need a simple.
I think I'll bring them the night I present the budgets.
That'd be great, that's great.
Depending on what you're asking for, you may want to bring Brody also, just to kind of soften us a little bit.
We've seen it go on through a thousand copies. Everything that we do with Brody just seems to just to keep, you know, exploding and exploding, and it's really a good thing. We've kind of taken the roles of the school resource offices, and Keith's been reassigned to, to go work with all of the elementary schools. The principals have put him on the calendar, and it's really, I, I forwarded a caption to the administrator last week, trying to Talk with the parents to see if we could release it, and it was really a moving It was really moving to see Brody sitting, you know, with a very young elementary school child going over an assignment. And it actually looks from behind, the both of them are working on the assignment, so. For me, you know, I don't want to be a little corny, you know, I'm a little bit older, I'm, I'm married to daughters of teachers, but for me It was a success moment, as I drove home, I, I really felt as though that my work is starting to make a difference, so.
Chief, as long as we're on the topic of Brody, I was reading this report, and I found out how he got his name. I had no idea before about how I got it. Can you share with the public?
Bristol, and the R O D Y, Rhodey is for Rhode Island, so we wanted to make them all things Bristol and all things Rhode Island, so.
Fantastic. And thank, thank you to building a strong foundation and building the trust in our community and confidence. Me and a lot of communities don't have a lot of confidence in their police departments, here we do, so we're extremely lucky, and thank you for your, everyone's hard work in the department.
And I thank all of the men and women, you know, both one and civilian, I'm, I'm sure you can see me echo that throughout the report, you know, there's no I in team, and These folks work very hard, you know, for, for the administrative council and all our residents, and as corny as that may sound, they really believe in it, so.
We're very proud of the police department, and our fire, all of our departments, and Make us proud every day when you're out there and doing all kinds of different activities and we see you there. I wasn't able to stop at the trunk or treat, but I, I went down to see it, I could not believe how many people Were there, and, you know, and, and all the different activities going on, and there's so many things that we do Where in cities, I think, people think of community policing as like, you know, within office community policing, but it's really being out in the community, and We have to be a community that has a lot of activities, and you're always right there. I think I mentioned that one of the prior meetings, I was so taken by, I mean, you know, always whenever I talk with police officers, they're always very, very Polite, hardworking, but at the The Christmas festival, you know, the new event that we had. You know, I was talking to a couple of them on that Sunday evening, and they're like I said, thank you guys, you know, when it was super rainy and it's sort of windy, they did an awesome job, thank you, and they're like Oh, you know what, next year, I think they're going to shut down this road, and I talked to them about this, they were so enthusiastic about things that we could do in the future. And I was like, I'm so happy to hear that, because it wasn't just like, oh, we're just hanging out here because we're getting paid, you know, whatever. But, you know, they took like a real interest in the activity, and they always do, and I think that's so awesome.
Can we just have a motion to receive and file at this point?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, receiving files. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Safe travels.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Chairman and members of the council, we do have a citizen that wishes to speak during the citizens' public forum, we have Peter Hewitt.
Thank God, I get this mask on for one.
If you could state your full name and address for the record, and typically with the citizens' public forum, Three to five minutes is what we like to keep it to, please.
Peter Hewitt, Little Wendy Drive, Bristol, and thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak tonight. This has been a very positive session, as far as I can tell, so I hate to be kind of a A drainer, that's my, my subject's going to be a little more, more negative. But before I do that, one more positive I want to add. I'm on the OPEB fiduciary board, whatever we call it. And the reason I asked to get on that was the state treasurer years ago put out a report Of all the towns and where they stood in terms of the funded liabilities for OPEB. And a lot of the towns had five, ten, fifteen percent funded, I mean, they were in miserable shape. We were better, I forget what we were back, back then. But we're over a hundred percent funded right now, and I, and I, and I think a lot of the credit for that goes to Julie. It does. So anyways, I just want to give compliment Julie on a job well done for the OPEB business. I want to talk about sex education in our schools. There was an existing statute in Rhode Island that sets the, the focus On sex education at the high school level. And the focus under the statute is on teachers focused on abstinence as the best method For preventing Pregnancies and sexually transmitted diseases. Last year, and again this year, last week, there was a stat, there was a bill, a bill filed. It's sponsored by several state legislatures, including our own Susan Donovan for Bristol and June Speakman, who co-sponsored this bill. And it was going to amend this current statute by adding certain language that I find particularly troublesome. So I wanted to come here tonight to speak to it, because hopefully people watch these town councils and get the word out. But I think parents don't know, and they need to know The effort that is ongoing to try to convert that statute that, that, that focuses on abstinence Into a much more controversial addition to what, what is going to be taught. Number one. I'll provide, I'll provide you with the specific language they added, and you can judge for yourself The extent to which this is controversial. First off, the bill, which is number seventy-one sixty-six in the House Extends the sex education from just high school down to the sixth grade. So it's going to be from sixth grade to twelfth grade, that this particular language and this mandate for teaching Is going to be applicable, and the, and the additional language follows, I quote, Provided further, courses in family life or sex education shall be appropriate for students in grade six through twelve. Of all races, genders, sexual orientations, ethnic and cultural backgrounds, colon Affirmatively recognize pleasure-based sexual relations. Different sexual orientations and be inclusive of same-sex relationships in discussions and examples. In addition, comprehensive course instruction shall include, shall include Gender, gender expression, gender identity, and the harm of negative gender stereotypes. I don't know why in the world Susan Donovan and June Speakman feel that this is, this is important to, to pursue, and perhaps Incorporate it to the statute, which then mandates what rioters to do, and then down to the school districts, but this is a statewide statute, so it applies to all schools, or might possibly. Both last year and this year, the bills were held by the education committee, which met last week, and held a bill for further study. So right now, like as last year, it, it, it's, it's not going anywhere. But my understanding of the legislative process is that that bill, although it's sitting dormant now in committee, being held for the study, That there's significant discretion by the Speaker of the House in conjunction with the committee chair To pull that bill out and let it go to the floor. So I just wanted to alert parents who aren't aware of this To be mindful of what's going on in our state house, and what's mind, and be mindful of what our two state representatives are pursuing On behalf of, I don't know what, but it's going to impact our kids. I don't know why in the world they're, they're pursuing this. Let's see. It's my view, the shame here on behalf of the two representatives, in addition to the toxic language of the bill Is that neither of our local state reps made any effort that I am aware of To inform their constituents of what they were trying to accomplish in silence That likely would have such a potentially harmful impact on the children, on the children Of such tender and impressionable ages with the resulting undermining of parents' traditional family values, morals, and beliefs. After all, should not the appropriate sex education of minors Belong exclusively to the responsibility, authority, and discretion of the parent. I believe Ms. Donovan and Ms. Speak were totally out of line advocating without any effort at transparency For such controversial pleasure-based sexual relations to be included In the health science curriculum of public school curricula in grades six through twelve. Parents need to pay close attention to what is happening in the public schools. Become familiar with your child's health science curriculum. Make an effort to stay, to attend school committee meetings to the extent that you can. Know your child's teachers, speak with your child, and be familiar with what is going on in the classroom. And I thank you very much. I have copies of the statute if you would, I'd like to distribute them. May I?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. So currently, this is that.
Can I, I'm going to stop, and I'm going to ask the solicitor for some guidance. On citizens' public forums, it's more, we can listen, but it is not an agenda item that is not advertised. So there can't be dialogue, but Mike, I would ask that you would weigh in on this and give us some guidance, please.
Sure, if you want to discuss a subject that's being brought up, you'd have to have a vote to add it to the agenda, then by a majority vote, you could then discuss it. Otherwise, you, you hear what the citizen has to say, and you move on.
No, I'll, I'll, I'm passed up, you know, I, I'll get clarification, you know. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Colonel.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, we're going to go back to executive session requests. Which is the request for executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two forty-six five eight five, with a discussion and consideration related to the acquisition of lease of real property, Cletus Restaurant.
Someone can just say so moved.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. So we're going into executive session, so we'll say goodnight to the public at this point, so thank you.